I will entertain a motion to allow Aaron Kelly to attend electronically if he shows up.
So moved.
I want you to roll call, please.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Coath.
Aye.
Mr. Kretchecki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion passed at zero.
Okay. Anyone say I have to speak tonight?
No one did.
No speakers tonight. Moving right on to the minutes of August 20th, 2020. Do you know for any additional corrections?
I need to make a correction on the public works report. I gave some numbers. Those were approximately not exact. I slipped down that they rented a machine for 250 bucks and it was
Forty seven cents.
Four hundred eighty seven dollars and thirteen cents. So it was close but not exact. So could I amend my numbers or in there put something that they're rounded?
Approximately.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is it like eight twenty minutes?
Yes.
No, sir.
Is it?
Per se, yeah.
Public Works here at bottom page two.
So can I change that? Approximately?
Changing 250 to
Yeah.
Approximately four, what's?
Four eighty seven.
That seems pretty per se.
Well, I had to get the number today and it didn't match what I said.
Right.
But I
No, I needed the four eighty seven.
Or just put down that my numbers are approximate. Is that okay to do?
That's what we're here for.
That's your time, Dan.
Any other changes to the minutes? All right. Then I want to take a motion to approve the minutes with the change at the top of page three.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Coath.
Yes.
Mr. Kretchecki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
No.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Motion passed at all.
Oh, I can't vote. There he is out here. He, unless you abstain.
No.
Somebody abstained.
I'll abstain.
I think he had, I think he had a claim.
All right, Mr. Henderson, you have a few items here.
Mr. Mayor, we have our esteemed executive director of the Hampshire Area Chamber of Commerce, who would like to present a brilliant idea for the municipal market this year.
Fantastic.
Present, no, okay. I guess I'm presenting. All right. So my idea of municipal market this year since the school closed and not likely going to be going to the president, um, we should have downtown. I can give a graph down what are supposed to close on streets and, um, um, working with the village to, with all the police and everybody to make that happen. I did manage to finally get down to all the businesses in the, in the certain area and talk to them about the plans and most of them were very receptive of it. There was, um, um, if I ever wondered about some parking issues, so I talked to Jamie Ford to see if they could use it.
Aaron just showed up. That doesn't feel good.
Okay. So anyway, um, if you have any questions or anything about it beyond that, I would, or comments or suggestions, I'd love to hear them. It's all good.
Sir? Have you made any amendments so that Santa can stay warm?
Kind of. We need to talk.
Santa would prefer to be outside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He brought it up last week.
You know, but, but to be fair though, for the last two or three years that it's been inside, Santa's always complaining about being hot. So this is a perfect answer.
Well, and I thought maybe if we had a little Santa thingy right outside the village hall, maybe at the top of the hour, Santa could be greeting with people and then come in.
We'll work on that, thanks.
Coco's, yeah. So, yeah. Thank you. Industry term.
Yeah, outside.
Hammer. Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, really, you know, it's just questions. There's no action required on this tonight. Like, the next item, which is a proclamation that you have before you celebrate Constitution Week, September 14 through 18.
Fantastic. We're gonna make a change on the, uh, fifth paragraph in the therefore Jennifer Magnussen section. I am not the president of the state of Illinois.
You're not?
No, no. It should be reversed. It should be in the village of Maine, uh, the village of Hampshire, in the state of Illinois. So we're gonna switch those two entities around.
I don't think we have. And you can proclaim yourself the president of Illinois.
Yeah, we don't have a president.
It's open.
Seat's open.
I don't want it.
Okay. With that, the minutes, we're still looking to.
Definitely looking. So I will proclaim that the Constitution Week will be September 14th through the 18th.
Be the party?
Day party.
I hear we can go to like some hair salon and get them.
Ooh, yes. All right. So that's done. Uh, next item.
Uh, yes, sir. A motion to approve the reappointment to the Downtown Munication Subcommittee to a three-year term, Jeanie Mayer and Michelle Blunkowski.
Any questions or comments?
They're both phenomenal numbers. Great job.
I will entertain a motion to approve the reappointment to the Downtown Munication Subcommittee for three-year terms for Ms. Jeanie Mayer and Ms. Michelle Blunkowski.
I'll make that.
He jumped that high. He's ready. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Coath.
Aye.
Mr. Kretchecki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion passed at zero.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion to approve the reappointment to the Business Development Commission to a three-year term for David Fizelato.
Any of that, Mr. Kretchecki?
He is also outstanding. He is one of the
Very good.
But I will entertain a motion to approve their reappointment of Mr. David Fizelato for a three-year term to the Business Development Commission.
Thanks, Mr. Wilson.
Give that one to Ryan.
Change my feet.
Who's second?
I think, I think really
No, I, no, if I came first, then I don't want to.
Oh, jeez.
I'm kidding. I'll be second.
Anybody? Anyone?
I said that.
Any further questions or comments?
Roll call, please.
Yes. Is he the only original number left?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was concerned. I just wanted to be, because why aren't we reappointing more of them?
Yeah, he's, he is, he was the only original number. Okay. From the people at Mike Amato, originally presented to the
In general, about the positions, do we ever post that we have openings coming up? Or is it just, it seems like we always reappoint people, but I never see anything that we post if there's interest in a position. It's not that David shouldn't be on this. I'm not saying that. It's just in general. I've never seen us post for interest.
So, um, when we have an opening, uh, we have posts, I mean, if you're referring to posting like, say via Facebook, um, we posted when we had openings, but, um, no, I would say that, uh, we have not solicited people to run for seats that are sitting or people are sitting. Usually, I guess to this point, we've operated under the if someone is enjoying themselves and feels like they're contributing and not being, you know, way out of bounds or making our lives difficult, then they can continue to serve. That's, you know, I'm not saying that's the right way, but that's certainly
I think he, it applies to planning commission and zoning board, too.
Right. Exactly. It feels like that's kind of how we've done everything.
Yeah, and that's why I said this isn't for this position. It was the same for zoning board when that's come up. And it seems like every one of the boards is just a reappointment.
Yeah, I think it's hard enough to get volunteers to join and if people are doing a good job and, you know, um, like I said, not driving us nuts and want to stay, then, uh,
Got it.
Just let them.
We don't have a lot of people knocking on our door.
No. But if someone wanted to, uh, you know, come for it, then certainly.
Any further questions or comments?
No, I would just want to say what Dave has done in his three years has been nothing short of outstanding. He has been incredible.
Phenomenal.
Incredible person. Phenomenal. Oh, yeah. I just feel like I don't want that to go without stating he has done an exceptionally good job. Complete with that in the minutes, because I don't No, he does. He is. And that is, and I mean that so sincerely. And I think the people who go there know that.
Do you have anything you want to say, or, because you know who's
I know. Hey, Dave, good to see you. Thank you for everything you do.
He's not lying.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Coath.
Aye.
Mr. Kretchecki.
Aye.
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 Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Motion passed at zero.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion before you to approve a Rapa license for the Hampshire Sportsman Conservation Club and the applications in your packet.
Any questions or comments?
That's a gun, right?
Oh, yeah.
I can breathe that. I'm like, there must be a gun.
It's a ring slip. It's a hard case.
Shoot me a test.
Yeah, buy tickets.
Twenty bucks, you win a $900 gun and package, whatever. All right. Any questions or comments? And I want to approve the Rapa license to Hampshire Sportsman and Conservation Club.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Kretchecki.
Aye.
Mr. Coath.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Should pass at zero.
Mr. Mayor, we have a resolution updating the policy regarding public comment at meetings of the village board of trustees. And I will do just a brief introduction on this. In, in recent weeks, we've had a particular individual sort of challenge our procedures for Open Meetings Act and, uh, procedures for participating by video. So I wanted to do a good review and, uh, understand what the prior rules were before these emergency rules were put in effect. And it turns out that there was a resolution back in 2003, 2005, where it did define procedures. And so we just updated that to include also some of the provisions of electronic participation. And in doing so, um, Mr. Schuster pointed out that although it did also exist in the original resolution, we cannot ask someone's home address, which was in the original resolution and also the one we're reading tonight. Uh, so we've, we've distributed a separate resolution, which is two red line changes that we'd like you to consider first amendment of the resolution in passing. And this, again, this is just to, to clean up and update our prior resolution and also add the electronic participation. This resolution would stay in effect behind the, uh, the emergency order.
All right. Any questions or comments? Motion to approve Resolution 20-10, a resolution amending the policy regarding public comment at meetings of the village board of trustees. It moves.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Kretchecki.
Aye.
Mr. Coath.
Aye.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion passed at zero.
A few further, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. Uh, Business Development Commission is the first up today.
We have not met since we last met and I gave you a report. So really no report. We've got a meeting coming up. Um, other than pointing out a couple things. First, to say thank you to Ms. Jeanie Mayer, that she can never get enough, actually. Um, she helped me in getting a, a chamber area guide to a new resident, which I was very grateful for. Ran into some, just moved into town and, um, they're asking some questions and, um, so she was so great. And then other than that, we had a meeting, uh, upcoming Wednesday, but it's a bit of a slow period for us. And Fifth Third happened. I don't know if everyone's seen any of Fifth Third, but
It's good.
It looks very
No, I haven't seen it.
It's boring. She did, she did watch.
It's boring.
I am. So, um, we have a meeting next Wednesday at six thirty.
Six thirty, September ninth.
September ninth, yeah.
I can bring in just a couple items.
Sure. Uh, you have the financial reports in front of you with the accounts payable. So we have some reimbursements in the amount of $346.60 we paid on before September 9th, 2020. Any questions on the reimbursement?
Hearing done.
Can you make my motion?
I will.
I will entertain a motion to approve bill's payable amount of $346.60.
So move.
Second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kretchecki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coath.
Aye.
Ms. Klein.
Aye. I'd definitely vote if you don't want me to.
And then our regular accounts payable, $123,654.03 to be paid on before September 9th, 2020. What's your question?
Page seven.
Yep.
Our reimbursement for child safety research. I just wanted to know.
That's my officer. Uh, this is now certified to do child studies. No other questions.
That was a question for $55. Any other questions?
Page five.
Yep.
$7100 for cabling. What cabling did Entree do for us for $7100?
Uh, they cabled, uh, the whole office so that we're all on a LAN connection now. Um, they ran tracking in the back half of the office where we don't have false ceilings and then ran new cabling so that everyone has a direct connection and not running off of, um, other than the big switch that's in our work room. No switches under anybody's desks or
The wiring in this office is awful. It's just something that people, over the years.
Didn't we just upgrade the Wi-Fi, though?
No.
No, not since 20
Uh, I thought we did. I thought we just had Comcast come do Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
No.
Home addresses. Trusty Kelly, as you know, we've upgraded the servers. We've upgraded all the PCs in the building. There was 10. And, uh, the last thing in the building that was antiquated and the last thing that could interrupt signals uh, is the, what is the LAN network cabling behind the walls. And, uh, I didn't want to have any risk that, now that we do have the Comcast high-speed cable, which we do have, we've had it now for about two months, maybe three months. Uh, but that, that only brought cable into the building. That really had nothing to do with the LAN network cabling behind the walls. So that's what was replaced.
And, and our Wi-Fi runs off of the Fire Law and not the
What, what do we run off of Comcast? I'm fine on the cabling, but then what are we running off the Comcast?
Well, the whole, all the internet goes out through Comcast, but this is the internal network to the building. So all the LAN cabling inside, ethernet, the ethernet network inside the office was updated, was updated and replaced.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You.
Motion, please.
All right. And then we'll entertain a motion to approve accounts payable in the amount of $123,654.03.
So moves.
Second. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Coath.
Aye.
Mr. Kretchecki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion passed at zero.
I have nothing further.
Nothing further. Public relations. Yeah. In your pactatives, the
Public relations, are you?
No. Public safety.
Hey, you give it.
Safety.
You were at a meeting.
You were there last night.
Really excited.
He was. We had a meeting last night, talked about census. We met with A5 and, uh, kicked off the branding conversation. They're going to be meeting the village staff and, uh, the departments and then your meeting on Wednesday, uh, to get a feel for what we feel Hampshire is. And they have got a series of questions that they ask us and they go in depth. Because I, I thought it was a great conversation. Um, we talked about, uh, some of the steps we're taking to increase, um, census involvement and, you know, fill out your census, pump it, tell the neighbors, tell your friends.
I like the thermometer.
Yeah, that was a, that was a good idea. I think that was Eric's. Was that Eric's or was it?
I think it might have been the mayor's idea.
Yours?
It was my idea.
Definitely wasn't mine.
Eric's. Somebody brought it up.
Oh, it was Eric's?
Aaron.
It was Eric's.
Eric. He raised his hand.
Good call.
So, good call, Eric. It definitely wasn't my idea.
I suggested the billboard that we're at, so what's up with it?
By the way, we are at 1.2% since the science went up.
You're right.
And we hadn't moved for two months prior to that.
What is it, Professor?
We're at 1.2 to 73.7.
Because the color changed, people looked at.
The green color. That was Toby's idea.
And that was before the thermometer went up.
They definitely stand out.
So.
So.
And then you got something you're going to cover on your public safety? Or like PR stuff, maybe? Something you would watch.
What are you doing?
No, no, you can report on there.
You're, you're tabpering on that committee for this.
So you want to wait, you want to do it now or do you want to do it?
No.
Okay. So, uh, the neighborhood watch conversation is back up. We did the neighborhood watch a few, well, a couple of years ago now. And everybody was into it for a short time and then everybody dropped out of it. Julie Austin has really, you know, stayed on it. So now with the recent, uh, events in town, it's brought up more of an interest. So, uh, bringing it back up, unfortunately, we can't all get together in a room. So I'm gonna ask, you know, we're Toby and his committee and S.J. and Josh, if we can try to set something up virtually. Maybe put up a sign up form or something for somebody that's interested, as long as the police
We, we, we just need to make the people aware that it's theirs.
Yes.
That will help and assist
Right.
along with the police department. But that's why the last one, we met at the school, you had two officers through. Okay, there. Whole big presentation, the whole nine yards. We were gung ho. Nothing ever happened. So.
Well, I think the community needs to take it seriously because there are a couple of people there in the community audience that thought it was a big joke. And, uh, we're making jokes about it, stuff like that. We're not called to learn. I think the village just stands to what Toby said, right? We're willing to help and we're willing to do this, but the community has to take this seriously. If they want to do this, the community has to take this seriously. Otherwise, it's a big, for a lack of a term of analogy, waste of everybody's time. Because it is a good thing and it does provide good, uh, coverage for the village and it's a good look and we're all getting involved, but you've got to stick with it. So as long as the police department's willing and then we can work with Josh and Jay to set something up electronically, then we can all do it in the comfort of our offices.
Hundred percent is.
Yeah. And then this way, you know, we just have to figure out the date and time. So we have to come up with a way for them to sign up. If they can be a part of it, set a date and time. They sign up before this date, they can attend. And then we'll just do it that way.
Before you get too involved with going down the road with this, would it make sense to send out, like I know BDC sends out surveys. Would it make sense to send out like a quick survey from the entire community? Interested, are you like really in this? And before you put too much work into it, you know, whether it's
I think you're gonna be able to tell pretty quick. We're gonna have the meeting and as last time, we, we developed block, you know, or different sections and trying to identify block captains.
Right.
And it kind of all petered apart pretty quick.
Okay.
And it really wasn't a whole lot of investment from us. I mean, we attended. I liked it because it's good PR. They get to see our faces.
Oh, sure.
And, and we are approachable. Okay. So it, I had some value in it. But it is up to them. They have, we'll help organize it. We will attend the meetings with them and, and, and give them feedback. But it is on them to keep it going and to make it work and to develop their own contacts.
Right. And you, like, I don't want you guys to waste your time.
No, and it's not even a waste of time. Even, even if it goes up and and comes right down. If it comes up, it comes right down.
But your, your department's already done the majority of the work that we would need to present on this anyway, because we did it two years ago.
Absolutely. You still have the, the material there. So we're good.
Okay. So we'll, we'll just work with public safety to get something.
Yeah.
All right. Anything further, public relations?
No.
Public safety, thanks. Public zoning. Planning a zoning, sorry.
Publicism. No, no report for me today.
All right. Public safety is an item. Do you want to report on it?
Uh, yeah, what you had before you was what Josh came up with, the information that I gave. And it's, uh, about three months of our offense table. And he converted it over to a, a chart that's pretty easy to read. As you notice, May, our totals were kind of down and it's pretty much, we were still dealing with the quarantine and hibernation, if you will. People weren't acting or acting up as much. Um, we had a transition in the June. That's when we had our first wave of, and they weren't all car burglaries. They were trespass. Uh, most of our car burglaries, there was no theft involved, so therefore it was, it was classified as a trespass. Very few of the people or the cars that were entered had something taken. Okay? It's, it, now it's, we're up to, uh, basically trying to get people educated again. Lock your doors. It's that simple. It really is. Uh, I just celebrated my 39th year here and I can remember one car that actually had a window broken out. And that was a purse over on Warner. So it's that simple. You lock your doors, they're gonna move down. They're gonna move down. They're gonna find your neighbor that didn't lock their doors. And the trend now seems to be going forward. They're looking for car keys. Uh, we had an incident that was back in, uh, June up in Lakewood where a couple of cars were stolen. A county officer, uh, got into a pursuit with one of them. There was a couple of cars that were involved also with them that ran the county squad off the road. And these cars all ended up in Chicago. We tracked them, uh, via, they were using a debit card. We were able to see who they were when they went into the gas stations. But there again, if you don't know who they are, you don't know who they are. So cameras are great. Everybody says get the best cameras unless you know who it is. So we, we had a group that was originally from Rockford, uh, traveling down here in a stolen Durango. They did some car burglaries and some trespasses. Rosemont Police Department got in the chase with them up to Boone County. Uh, they apprehended a couple of them. We made a connection with a couple of the juveniles in that one. So we, you know, made some headway with that. But we are, you know, the whole area is inundated with it. It's a cycle. We're working with other departments to drive, to try to develop a pattern. If there is one. But we've seen the videos, the car comes in, it stops in the middle of the street, doors open and they and they take off and they're into everybody's driveways and then they're gone. They're gone. And it's, it's education, you know. I'm sorry that it's happening, but it's happening everywhere. In fact, we have one that's, uh, one of our cars that's still outstandingly stolen and it's up in Rockford. We'll hear dispatches every once in a while that it has been spotted. Uh, the police department let us know that. Mayor and Ralph picked up two of their stoles out there. They said, yeah, by the way, uh, Rockford saw your truck the other day. So everybody's dealing. Sooner or later, you're gonna blind squirrel.
There we go. All right. Anything else? Any questions? Anything further, I'll help you. Build the trail. Don't.
I ran again on the trail. It did hurt myself.
It did hurt you, so I
Yeah.
I can't figure
How's the new trail?
Beautiful. Still hard to run up that last
You thought though, that you would have hurt yourself when the trail was messed up.
And I didn't mess it up in the spot when the trail was messed up. It was just the super. Now, other than that.
Uh, village services.
Nothing to report.
Public Works has
Can I ask? Oh, go ahead. Did Aaron Neal get in touch with you today?
With me?
Yes.
No, because I gave him your number.
Because I gave you the new number. I don't know, Aaron, Aaron Neal, who is, uh, I think one, pretty high up in Elgin and their Public Works, said that, uh, Village, uh, Waste Management was passing on some kind of COVID price increase. So I just thought I'd mention it to you, he called me asking if we had gotten hit with it, and I thought it was.
How could they track the COVID?
I don't know, because he said, it was, it was sixty-four cents, it was a lot, but, per bill, but I was just kind of curious, Aaron, if you had heard of that.
No, Vaughn, Vaughn hasn't said anything about that whatsoever, the only price increase we had was our contractual one back in July. But other than that, there's, he's been sending me usage reports at the end of the month, but no, no other price increase.
Okay, well, it might, I don't know, I didn't know why they hit Elgin and announced, maybe there's something specific.
Because they just raised her.
Well, maybe, that's what I said, I thought. Anyways, fine deal.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I can ask, well, I don't want to ask about a pricing.
Maybe not ask yet. Alright, Public Works has a report. Yep, I don't know, who's, and, are you guys adding this now? Luckily? Public, Public Works report. Yeah, okay. That just gives you an idea what Public Works is doing. Uh, there's also a, a chart that shows you, uh, the utility locates asphalt. Uh, when they do twenty-five tons of asphalt, you know, they gotta saw cut it, dig it out, gravel it, compact it, you know, barricades and all that, so. There's a lot of work involved, but this is just kind of a, a, uh, fraction of what Public Works does, uh, for the month.
Not much.
What have asked each department to do is give us kind of metrics that are measurable, so it's certainly not everything that they do. Um, and, uh, you'll be aided one of the water department on the last, what the last report is.
Hey, Toby, when, when it says, um, at the top of this, uh, Jay, if you can scroll up, or Josh, I don't know who's showing this. Um, when it says Streets Department Utility Locates, is it, like, if you call Julie for locates, is it our street department that comes and does the locate? Is it some, is that what this is? Is this something else?
Yes, we do it.
Okay, alright.
You want her?
We, we just identify our village utilities, each, each utility has to locate their own. Any, any, did that answer your question, Aaron?
Yep, perfect, I just wondered.
Okay. And you can see, there's a lot of them.
Those armed Cub Boy Scouts selling flags.
Uh, actually, there was a Julie locate on every, uh, flag.
Yeah.
So I, that was a little construed, because my neighbor had all the, uh, locates around the hole that they were gonna do. And they came, they drilled it, they were gone in, like, twenty-two seconds.
Yeah, it was like a hun, I think, Mike, what was their original, their first round, they did like, they had a hundred and, a hundred and sixty people sign up or something?
Hundred ninety-two, I thought. And then they cut people off, and said, no more. Their arms and backs were killing them.
Yeah, they just, they just reopened it again for more orders.
Wow.
Thanks.
Good for them. They're walking around hobbling, because they can't hardly move.
Alright, any, uh, further questions on the Street Department report? Alright, new business or other announcements before we go into executive session? Yes, uh, Monday is the, um, BFW's putting on a big event at Seiler. Uh, the memorial is completed, and it'll be completed tomorrow. I think so, I'm, I'm, but it's phenomenal, and, you know, come see it. Um, looks great, there's a ceremony, I, I have no idea. There you go.
Our team, Mr. Kelly, right?
Mr. Aaron Kelly. Aaron Kelly. Our executive will be giving us, uh, a field.
Is this from, uh, Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Oh.
For Miss Engel?
Can you quote in the minutes, thank you, Miss Engel?
Mm-hmm.
That was exciting.
Alright, and, anything else? And I will entertain a motion to adjourn from executive, or, for regular session, to go into executive session under section two C twenty-one, review of executive session minutes.
Do I, do I need to go into a different Microsoft Teams, or is it fine to stay into this one?
I think you're out.
I think you're out, because you can't, you're not reading minutes.
You can't be, you can't go executive session, uh.
We actually couldn't, it's, it's possible, but we're not set up to do that right now. We can move to a private room, which can be done, but we're not set up for that.
Gotcha. Okay, everyone have fun, I'm done.
Right, we'll call you back for open session.
Alright.
Tell you that for jury.
Hold on, Kelly.
Roll call, go, please.
Mr. Kelly? Mr. Kelly?
I heard you, aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Kretjeki?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.